Consideration possible action on updated temporary dock policy. Consideration possible action authorizing the town administrator to sign a three-year service contract with Otis Elevator in the amount of $7,559.52. Consideration possible action on the reappointment of Frances D. O'Connell to the cultural council with a term to expire 9/16/2028. Consideration possible action on accepting a donation from Photonis Scientific Incorporated of an Altar for XR Multi-Gas Detector with a value of $2,500. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval minutes, citizens forum, and adjournments. So with that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then just a moment of silence for those serving abroad for our country. Thank you for those who've served. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
Just a reminder that tomorrow night is National Night Out on the Common.
Great.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Four to seven. Pardon? Four to seven. Thank you.
I just want to say I had the opportunity to volunteer and attend the Pan Mass. I wasn't there when the bikers took off at four thirty in the morning, no, but I volunteered the day before and I just wanted to give a shout out to our police and our SERP. I thought they did a really good job. And a lot of bikers expressed their disappointment that it's unfortunate we're not going to have that event anymore, but I think we did a really good job sending them off this year, so.
I'm Mary Benter.
There is a book sale at the library on the Eighth and Ninth from ten to five.
Great. All right, I have nothing to add. So moving on, we can get into department reports. Lauren, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Dieter, conservation agent for the town of Sturbridge. Last year when I came before you all, I did not have much to say because I had been here for a month. So having said that, we've done quite a bit in the last year. We've seen a lot of change in the department, including myself. We had lost our previous assistant agent over the spring, who has been replaced with Lori, who's doing fantastic, has caught on very quickly and is taking every learning opportunity to catch up. But with that, we've been able to revise some of our processes, move some communication processes along the way, improve interactions with the public, and public outreach that we are currently working on, too. As you all know, there's more to conservation than just permitting. We oversee the open space management for over seventeen thousand acres of property. We work on public outreach and education, which for anyone who saw the last month, we did the Your Land, Your Legacy at the Senior Center, which was extremely well-attended. We have fifty-five people that came, not just Sturbridge residents, but some from beyond. We worked with Opacum Land Trust and DCR. This event was kind of to educate and inform on different protection statuses for your land and kind of preparing for the future. And hopefully, it got some people's minds turning, but that just kind of works on the continuing outreach we're doing. We actually have another event coming up next week, which is Simple Steps, Big Impacts, just simple things that homeowners can do to improve the area around them. And that's something that we're working with our summer intern on as well, so that's kind of how she's wrapping up her time with us, is doing this public education. So I encourage everyone to talk about it, join us here next Tuesday. It's going to be a nice event as well. Just simple five, ten-minute bullet points and some very simple things that really anybody can do. As far as the commission, minor updates to the report that you did receive. We lost Nate. He was just, had a lot going on with his commitment to trails and work and whatnot. So we do currently have a vacancy for one regular member and two alternates. Within hours of posting the vacancies, I received a lot of interest and have sat down with four different people. Two of them attended our last meeting to kind of just get an idea if this is something that they want to move forward with, and they do. So we're going to be doing some sit downs with Ed to discuss with these people what the, what this would look like for them if they want to continue to join us. But it's great seeing so many people wanting to be involved. As far as this last year, we issued a total of one hundred and sixty-three permits, which included major projects such as the urgent care on Charlton Road, the utility transmission line project on Podunk and Putnam, new trails, trailhead parking, and ADA upgrades at the Cedar Street Recreation Area. We continue to hold hybrid meetings and using the detailed agenda to improve efficiency and accessibility to applicants and their representatives, especially for those who the engineers or representatives are visiting multiple towns within the same night. It has proven to be convenient, although we prefer in-person attendance because things do happen and sometimes connection can be difficult. We do keep that option open. We've administered approvals for minor projects to help reduce some of the hearings for more simple projects, whether it's a utility pole in the outer buffer zone or archery removal process. We've had a total of nine enforcement actions over this last year, from simple tree removal to work being done without a permit. These are all reviewed with other departments as well to make sure that everyone is caught up and if there's permits missing for one department, if there's permits missing for another. So we're actively working with these residents, also trying to help educate and inform, because sometimes it's not necessarily that they're trying to slide past the permitting process. Sometimes it's just people that don't know, especially when you move to a property with wetlands where you don't know there's wetlands, or you've never owned a house on the lake before and don't realize that there's a whole new set of rules there. So working with these homeowners to try and resolve these matters, but also figure out where these gaps in education might be and how we can help improve that to reduce them less violations. Some other key accomplishments from this past year. I've been successful with holding our quarterly conservation and coffee discussions. We have these every three months. It's an informal discussion, just a roundtable with different stakeholders from the lake associations, trails, conservation, Opacum Land Trust. Army Corps of Engineers has attended. Department of Fish and Wildlife has attended. And it's really just, like I said, a roundtable discussion talking about problems that we're dealing with, issues that one area might be having, trying to kind of share different ideas and struggles to collaborate. This is actually where the Your Land, Your Legacy came from, was from one of these discussions. So those have proven to be very successful. We've completed our stormwater review with tie-in bond through, with DPW and with planning, so trying to take steps to move forward on that and what needs to be done to improve these, including trying to get a better inventory of all the stormwater BMPs on private property, since they do tie into the town systems for the most part, where a lot of them that are under conservation jurisdiction, once they're developed, there's little to no oversight. So trying to get a better handle on overseeing these and making sure that no problems occur and that all the property owners, whether it's private residence or commercial, are actually doing what they need to do to maintain these areas before problems arise, such as flooding or sediment into the town systems. We have made a lot of effort into trying to digitize and reorganize some of our records just to be able to have a faster approach when there are people that call and inquire about a old project or a property that they're looking at, and just trying to make this a little bit more of a quick process for both staff and for the resident or interested party calling. Also collaborated with Jean, the planning department, to update the open space and recreation plan. There have been several environmental challenges that we faced this last year that are essentially just kind of out of our control. Tree loss has been a huge issue that we've been dealing with, especially in the lakes. We've been losing white pines all over the place for different reasons. The emerald ash borers are really having an impact on the ash trees that are slowly dwindling away. We've seen this in the past with the gypsy mods, too. So just trying to figure out if there's anything that we can do, working with the state, working with other municipalities, that we can either try to get ahead on it. We're looking into doing some different options with some of the forestry groups local in the area to see if there might be some options for tree donation and tree replanting to try and mitigate some of this loss that we're having. For those that don't know, we had a tremendous drought this past year, so we were able to see some of the downsides of that, but I would anticipate that within the next year or two, we're really going to see the effects of that. And then, of course, developmental pressure near wetlands. There's not that much land left in town that is not developed, so those parcels are going to be a little bit more complicated. So trying to navigate that process of being compliant with the regulations, working in the best interest of the community, and also trying to work with those developers for moving projects forward when appropriate. As far as moving forward in the next year, we've kind of worked on the goals for FY26, strengthening in the community relationships and really focusing on outreach, especially to the lake residents. There's been a lot of concern on algae blooms. I know the dock policy's on your agenda, but really just trying to connect more with the lake residents and finding out what the key issues are that they're having with the permitting process. We get a lot of complaints, especially in the summer, from people on the lake that drive their boats by and see someone's doing something. So just trying to navigate the process in general. A couple of years back, the town had set aside some money for a Plimpton Master Plan and the Fisk Hill Conservation Restriction, so we've been picking that process back up. We were able to get some, make some tremendous strides with Fisk Hill, including working towards finalizing the survey that was done and getting a baseline study, and then starting to work with that same contractor to look at doing the Plimpton Master Plan, working with Trails and Opacum Land Trust, Natural Heritage, since that's going to come up as well. Well, next steps will be working towards updating the lead mine forest plan, which expired back in 2020, so I'm exploring different funding options to get forward on that, possibly CPC funds, but looking to, hoping that the conservation restriction grant opens back up. It was kind of pending the governor's budget this year, the state's budget, and it hasn't released yet, so I'm waiting to follow up on that. Continuing to develop the stormwater BMP tracking system, educational offerings, and beginning regulatory review to see if there's any areas within our bylaws and regulations that might need to be updated, either to things that have changed or adding some additional protection layers specifically to the stormwater components of our regulations. Other than that, I think we've had a very successful year. We've made a lot of connections with our communities. We've heard a lot of feedback from our communities and just hoping to really continue to develop this department.
All right. Questions for Lauren.
I just had, I just had a couple. You know the coffee that you've initiated with stakeholders? You said, are SLAT people attending that?
Yes.
And how about residents on the lake or just their representatives?
Just the representative. I've had Chuck coming and Paula has come as well.
So when you have these coffees, are they with everybody or do you say, okay, Departments of Fisheries and Wildlife's coffee, now we're going to have coffee with SLAT? You know, you mentioned all the ones that are invited. Are they all invited to the same ones?
Same setting, yep.
Oh, okay.
Usually one person, so that way it doesn't violate open meeting law.
Okay.
I have to tell you, they are very, very productive to have a representative from each of these different groups sit at a table together. They're probably one of the most productive, like, daytime meetings that I think I sit in on.
I'm surprised because some people work that they're able to do it, so it's good.
Yes.
Anything else, Mary?
No.
Anything, Mary there?
No.
Chase?
Very good report, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks.
I appreciate your time.
Oh, let's hold on a second, Lauren. Let's just do Action Item F quickly so we don't have to hold you. So Action Item F is consideration possible action on the appropriation of funds from the Wetland Protection Fund in the amount of $6,043 for fiscal year 2026. So my understanding on this is taking, we're appropriating five hours to cover the concert delegation department's assistant. Is that fair?
Correct.
All right. Any questions, thoughts, concerns from Lauren?
Is that the same amount we've done before?
It's actually a reduced amount because Lori's hourly is lower than what the previous employee was. I believe it was a little over seven thousand last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve the appropriation of the Funds for the Wetland Protection Act in the amount of $6,043 for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, Lauren, so.
Thanks, Lauren. I appreciate your time.
Have a good one. Okay, Jean.
Hi. Good evening. Jean Booban, Town Planner, for those watching that may not know me. Happy to present my biannual report this evening. So as you can see from the report, it's been kind of a busy time period. So in the past six-month period, we've provided staff res, support for thirty-seven meetings already this year. So that's, we're set to do more than double what we would normally do in a typical year. So a typical year for our department is about forty-eight meetings for the year. So we're, it's a pretty busy year in our department, so I really have to give kudos to Janay Lacy and April Griffin in my office because we couldn't do this without them. We have an incredible team and a lot of nights when everyone's gone home, Janay's still here, so a special thanks to her for doing all of that. So I think you can attribute the busyness to Historic Commission being very busy and also the Housing Trust being very busy on top of regular planning board, zoning board, and histor, excuse me, design review committee meetings. So I've given you, as usual, a list of all the permits, so I won't bother going through all of that. Unless anyone has specific questions, I think I'd rather spend the time highlighting some of the major projects that we're working on. So the Historic Commission's working on Phase Three of the Community-Wide Historic Preservation Survey, and this year, they decided to concentrate around the ponds. And the main reason that we did that is they're one of the most threatened areas in the community. We see a lot of demolition and reconstruction around the ponds. So when we did our Community-Wide Historic Preservation Plan, that was one of the areas that we thought we should target. And so we started working with Easton, and they brought back some initial survey work to the commission. And then when the commission started to review it, they thought that we're not really getting anything unique out of this. We're getting survey after survey of these same cottages that weren't necessarily unique in architectural style. So after a lot of discussion with Easton, it seemed more appropriate to kind of evaluate that on a subdivision level. So that's actually what we're doing. So they're doing, still doing the survey around the ponds, but we're looking at that at a more subdivision level. So how did this area develop? What was the impetus for this? Who were the developers? What are the architectural styles that you might find in there? So I think we'll get a really good detailed work product that way that will give us the history of the area. So we're a little behind schedule, but I think we'll end up with a really good process, project out of that. So I've given you a few pages to read on that. And then another, I think, really exciting project we're working on is I was able to apply for and receive a grant through DLTA for historic register nominations. So the Historic Commission chose the Samuel and Lucy Hobbs House, which is Twenty-three Hall Road, and the Samuel and Mary Morris House, which is Forty-seventh Farquhar Road. And we, both property owners were thrilled, actually, to get this work done free of charge. And we're working with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and the property owners and myself to do all the paperwork to get their properties nominated on the, do all the work to get them nominated on the historic register. And we believe not only will they qualify from an architectural basis, but also on a historic basis. And a very interesting story came out is one of the heirs of Twenty-three Hall Road actually married somebody from Forty-seventh Farquhar, so you have a nice intermingled story there as well. So that's been a really nice project to work on with the property owners. And then Noble Energy, as you know, we've been working on a signalized intersection since about 2023. We're still working with the state. Mass DOT is taking a very long time to review this project, much longer than I think is reasonable to expect. But they say they have a lot of employees out on personal time off, which is causing delays in review. So last week, they did work with the bank, Noble, and our engineer, and came to an agreement on what the intersection for the bank will look like. So the bank will actually be using the signalized intersection as well. So all these years later, $12,000 remaining in our grant account and about $100,000 out of pocket of the developer, and we're still not completely approved. We're at between seventy-five and hundred percent approval with Mass DOT. So I'm hopeful we'll be approved in the maybe next one to two months and that this project can get underway. I've honestly never seen a process take quite so long, but we'll keep persevering on that. As Lauren mentioned, the open space plan is done. Thank goodness. That was a long process. I think it came out very well. This is my fourth and final open space plan that I will prepare for the town of Sturbridge. It's a ten-year plan, so I can say that. I will not be here in ten years. Mary Lou. But very pleased with the way it came out, a very good effort on the part of everybody. And it's with the state now, so we'll just wait to get their requested edits. I'm sure we won't get a one-and-done approval, but I'm very pleased with the way it came out. I think it looks fantastic. We have a lot of great information in there, so very pleased with that. The Affordable Housing Trust, all of our paperwork will go to the state tomorrow for our final approval. April had a very productive meeting with the state last week. We're hoping to have a housing forum on September sixteenth, which is a Tuesday evening, and another one on that Saturday morning, which will be September twentieth, to roll out our housing programs and also have some people here from local banks, USDA, to also provide information on what they can offer, because people probably may be aware but may not be aware that they also offer like $25,000 down payment assistance to first-time home buyers. And we also have a lot of educational materials we can get out to people. So really excited to be able to roll that out. I think one of the biggest things that we'll all be facing this coming year is this, you know, new solar, wind, and battery storage issue that is going to be facing all of us. So I've attended a few sessions and at, as you know, I hold monthly land use meetings with our land use staff. And Stephen Mino is our Department of Energy Resources Staff Liaison now, or Town Liaison. And he reached out to me because he was trying to outreach to planners to get information on this consolidated permitting that's going to be required of communities. Basically, it's a fast-track permitting. And so small systems, twenty-five meg or less, will be coming to towns, and anything larger than that will be under the purview of the states. And to give you an idea of small systems, twenty-five meg or less, you're talking about clearing a hundred acres to put up solar. That's a small system. And they want this all done in twelve months under a consolidated permitting. So when he reached out to me to get my feelings or my thoughts on permitting, I asked if he could come and meet with our land use division, and he did. And I think that our staff gave really good feedback that he was able to take back to, you know, his boss and his group as they start to work on permitting standards. But I think, you know, as, and I, you know, I don't want to sound negative, but I'm going to say, as is typical with the state, their timelines are not going to allow, align with town timelines. They need to have their final regulations published in the Mass Register by February twenty-seventh, 2026, which will give us little to no time to have anything prepared for town meeting. And I'm a little concerned, and I think that we should all be a little concerned, that we're going to once again have to react to something that I think could have significant impacts on communities. And so I'm making it my priority to attend every session that I can. I'm attending a CMRPC session Thursday evening. I attended a session in March and I offered testimony as to what I thought the impacts could be. The Mass Association of Planning Professionals has been very active, and I'm sorry, I forgot to put one item in your packet, and I did make hard copies for you, but Jeff Lacy and Michael D. Chiara, who are two very well-respected planners in our field, wrote a white paper and talked about what they thought some of the negative impacts of some of these and some things that should be considered as the state works to draft these regulations and permitting standards that should be considered. And I did make a copy for each of you. If you'd like one of these, I can leave them. They talk about really just kind of the effects of clearcutting, stormwater and glare and, you know, battery storage impacts and things like that. And I, you know, I think there's a lot to be considered, and I think that there will be a large impact on planning departments as we hustle in the next less than twelve months to try to figure this out, as, you know, we get regulations in February, and we'll probably be looking for a special town meeting to try to deal with this.
What I would say is don't be afraid to ask for legal resources because it is going to be, this is a multifaceted problem, and odds are the state is not going to, they're going to say that this has to happen in XYZ, but it triggers a variety of other laws. So it, and I want to, because particularly, it's kind of what Lauren referenced earlier about the nature of the properties in town really just being wet at this point. They're not well-suited for battery properties for a variety of reasons. And so, and we're probably less vulnerable in a lot of ways than some communities are. But just so we're not just getting shellacked by some crappy state regulations, I guess, is what my concern would be.
I think we just have to be well-aware and well-prepared and know that this is coming and be prepared to deal with it. So I just wanted to.
Can you just explain a little more for me? So beyond a certain size, the state is just going to take over and we're not going to have any, any input at all?
They're going to treat it as a public utility, basically. So they'll treat it that way. So it was the Act to Promote a Clean Energy Grid, Advancing Energy Equity and Protecting the Ratepayers, that was signed by the governor in November of 2024. And it talks a lot about expediting permitting, and it was for solar, wind, and battery and other energy storage systems.
But it doesn't provide for our input for the large-scale projects?
Well, not for the large, large scale. We can give input, but ultimately, they have the final say.
And part of it even with the permitting on the local ones is the timeline that we have to permit does not allow us to thoroughly vet. So if we don't get, we are going to be required to give them the permit. It doesn't even say that we could even deny the permit. We have to do it within twelve months. So, or I think it's twelve months. So we don't even have the opportunity to vet. So you also have an agenda item tonight just about battery storage, just that one little portion to start the conversation going up to the State House of we don't, we want local control. So just going to hit it from, I mean, I think we need to hit it from every end we can. Legal, planning, my end, and just not relent on this. And the other small towns are on board to fight this. Every, you know, the small-town administrators I'm talking to, particularly in the rural communities, not that, we're a little better, as the chair said, but some of these rural communities that have a lot of farmland and forested areas that are not as wet are extraordinarily vulnerable.
So, yeah, I don't have anything to shame for that.
Yeah, just something to be aware of. And then I think just a couple other things kind of beyond that is, you know, just kind of normal business. And I did attend the Rotary Scholarship Dinner. Griffin Harold is a student I've been mentoring since he was twelve. He graduated this year, and he's off to Bridgewater State, majoring in geography with a minor in planning. And then this summer, I've been mentoring and have another young student, Grayson Chen. He'll be a senior at Tiantasco this year. He has an interest in urban planning, so he's been shadowing me this summer, so.
You may bring him to a meeting. He's a great kid.
Yes, and he's coming tomorrow on site visits with Heather and I. So those are kind of the little icings on the cake that I love to do. So with that, unless you have any questions, that's kind of my.
Hello. Nice report.
Lauren, any questions? Mary?
No, I was just going to say, was that complaint, the open meeting law complaint resolved in our favor or has it not been resolved? I know it happened in May.
So I provided information that I had, you know, that we had posted the meeting rooms, that, you know, the meetings are being televised. So they responded to him saying that, you know, this is what they, this is the action they've taken. If it doesn't resolve your complaint, let us know if you would like to take further action, and we haven't heard anything.
So we were proactive.
So we believe we've taken care of it.
Nice. So the Five Guys architectural sign in April, does that mean that the Five Guys are coming?
Well, we've approved everything, and they have not applied for a building permit, so I'm not entirely sure if they're moving forward, but everything's approved. They do have three years to exercise those permits.
Okay. Great. All right, Jean.
Thank you.
I'll leave these with Frances, so if you do want. I'll leave these with Francis, so if you do want a copy of this white paper, I just think it has a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Jean.
Thanks, Lauren.
Okay. So, we are moving onwards and upwards, if I can find my agenda. What did I do here? All right. I've lost my first written agenda.
Oh, yeah, so it's me.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Yep, so just very briefly, I did meet with Mass DOT's Adopt a Spot people at the Three Triangles. They will allow us to put one more mound, if you will, on each triangle. They will make the signs. I am talking about whether or not we have to have an additional sign on all three, or Mary asked if we might not have more signs, or even if it's just one sign.
Yeah, and I just want to say that to the, get the boards in, because that's, I mean, we don't need to advertise, and we don't want three, four, five adopt a highway sign. It kind of takes away from the whole idea that we're trying to beautify. We don't need five signs like that.
I think we could put one on one of the islands, it's just, you know, town of Sturbridge.
Do we even, I guess, are we required to?
Well, I sent him an email, and he didn't respond to that question yet, so I don't know.
Because my vote would be that we don't put any on ours, you know.
Okay, yeah, because the welcome sign sort of is our sign. And then, I did also speak with them on behalf of Sturbridge Tourism, and Tourism is considering whether or not they want to do that strip that I really want to see done across from the state police barracks, between New Boston and the state police barracks. I went out there with him, and there's a certain area that he thinks would be safe for us to put mulch and some perennials there. So, it was a positive morning with the Adopt a Spot guy. Just thanks again to our fire department for their efforts at Teddy G's and Sadie Green. Sadie Green was back in the 31st, at least with half of her building. So, she's sort of up and running. Public House put up the tenants safely elsewhere, and they will be able to move back. The building was saved, no injuries. So, I know our fire department is represented here, so thank you to our RFD and of course, PD for assisting on those as well. Again, thank you to PD for Pan Mass Challenge. I went over on Friday and did see the organizers and sort of expressed our sadness that we're losing them, and she was very gracious. But again, you know, as she said, nothing we could do to save it, just a whole lot of things that went into it that are just out of our control, unfortunately. And I did, our Economic Development Director, Terry, has designed a survey that's now, this week, in the hotels for trail usage to find out, because this came up during town meeting about the bridge question and the trails question. You know, what do people come into town? Do they come into town and use our hotels for, you know, and use the trails when they're in our hotels? So, I wanted to be sure we got that out there through August, September, October, which are really our prime trail seasons, you know, make sure we catch the fall prop. So, we'll, we'll get information on that. And then, I did speak to the owner of the, we call it the Belanta property, but it's 53 Holland Road. She did indicate there had been appraisal done several years back, and as I indicated to her in appraisal, it was seven or eight years old. Is it really going to help much on anything we can or can't do, or make an assessment whether we want an easement, if there's any consideration of purchasing? So, this is the property that sits between two town properties and is the only thing that stops us sort of from having a continual access through that rivalance area. So, I told her that I was interested in having it appraised again. She supported that, so I have contracted an appraiser to get another appraisal of that so we can make a determination whether it's worth the town offering, bringing to town meeting, offering money for that or not, or whether it's something we want to look at maybe as an easement option, what the cost for an easement would be on something like that. I also am in the process of trying to get a commercial appraiser for the Street or Beach project, because that property needs a certified commercial appraiser, because part of that land is, or that land is commercial. So, that is just generally my update in a nutshell. We had a couple other things, but they're part of the agenda items.
Okay, we're going to move on to our action items, which are going to begin with consideration and possible action on the hiring of Benjamin Grasso as a full-time police officer at the rate of 3236 per hour, contingent upon successful completion of the MPTC 800-hour Recruit Officer Academy and obtaining post-certification effective August 25th, 2025. Chief?
Good evening. I'm pleased to recommend Benjamin Grasso for deployment as a full-time police officer with the Sturbridge Police Department. Mr. Grasso has served as a dispatcher with our department for nearly two years and has consistently demonstrated professionalism, dedication, and strong commitment to public safety. His work ethic and loyalty to the Sturbridge Police Department have been commendable. Mr. Grasso holds a Bachelor's of Art and Music Theory from the University of New Haven, and he continues to advance his education and training. In addition, Mr. Grasso has achieved the highest rank in Boy Scouts of an Eagle Scout. Being an Eagle Scout demonstrates the commitment to qualities like perseverance, leadership, and service. He is also currently enrolled in a program to obtain his EMT certification and is set to begin his master's degree in public administration at Annemarie College in the near future. I recommend that Benjamin Grasso be appointed at the hiring rate of 3236 per hour and that he retain the benefits he has earned during his time as a dispatcher. I further recommend that this appointment be made effective August 25th, 2025, and contingent upon his successful graduation from the MPTC 800-hour Recruit Officer Academy and obtaining post-certification.
Any questions from the board?
When does the academy start?
August 25th.
All right. You've come a long way, Ben.
All right, anything else? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Benjamin Grasso as a full-time police officer at the rate of 3236 per hour, contingent upon successful completion of the MPTC 800-hour Recruit Officer Academy and obtaining post-certification effective August 25th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Congratulations, Ben, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. We're not really here anymore.
Yes, we said it. I said, I'm kidding until you move it up all until the other dispatches.
I know. It's consideration and possible action, going to action item B, consideration and possible action on the hiring of Nicholas Newman as a full-time police officer with an hourly rate of 3916, pay and benefits equivalent to a three-year officer excluding longevity, effective August 19th, 2025. Chief?
I'm pleased to recommend Nicholas Newman for the appointment of a full-time police officer with the Sturbridge Police Department. Nicholas brings with him some valuable experience from the North Brookfield Police Department, where he has served since July of 2020 as a patrol officer. He is also a graduate of Tantascow Regional High School, which gives him a strong, gives him strong ties to our community. I recommend that Nicholas be appointed with the pay and benefits equivalent to a three-year officer excluding longevity at a starting rate of 3916 per hour with an effective start date of August 19th, 2025.
Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, on the action of hiring Nicholas Newman as a full-time police officer with an hourly rate of 3916, pay and benefits equivalent to a three-year officer excluding longevity, effective August 19th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, second. And all those in favor? Great, welcome aboard.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Congratulations.
Welcome. He's safe out there.
All right. Moving on to action item C, which is consideration and possible action on reassignment of Hillary Murray from the police department from a full-time position to a part-time officer at a rate of 3840 per hour, effective August 4th, 2025. Chief?
I'm writing to inform you that Sergeant Hillary Murray has submitted her resignation from the full-time police department as a sergeant with the Sturbridge Police Department, effective August 3rd, 2025. Sergeant Murray has had a distinguished and impactful career with the department. She served for many years as the school resource officer at Burgess Elementary School, where she built strong relationships with students, staff, and the community. Sergeant Murray also holds the distinction of being the first female officer in the history of Sturbridge Police Department to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. My promotion. Sergeant Murray has made a personal decision to pursue a career in education and feel that officer, greater flexibility and better work-life balance as a member, as a mother with two young children. While I recommend resignation be accepted with regret, I thank her for her dedication and service and wish her the very best. In addition, Sergeant Murray has requested to remain on with us part-time in a part-time capacity. I fully support this request and recommend the appointment as a part-time police officer effective August 5th, 2025, at the rate of 3840 per hour.
All right, questions from the board?
I just want to say, Hillary, you've been, you've made a big impact on this town. I'm sorry to see you go, but at least you'll still be here part-time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Appreciate it. Been an honor and privilege to serve for as long as I have, and look forward to doing it in a capacity when I get a chance to do so in between teaching.
Oh, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Jumping to teaching from police work?
Yeah.
I'd rather be a cop.
Yeah, with your arms. All right. So anyways, but beyond that, I would thank you for your service, and with that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Are you going to continue to be part-time while you're a teacher, or are you only going to be part-time in the summers?
I spoke to the chief saying I'd probably be not here for a couple months and then reassess as far as how I would be able to provide during the school year.
She'll, yes, she'll have the same sort of restrictions on hours that she can do it during vacations and...
She, well, she's not in our school district, which makes it a little bit different. So, her, her pay's not going to be impacted like...
We don't have that overtime situation.
So, she's not going to have that, but she has taken a few months to get acclimated to her new position, learn it. She's actually going to head the department over there, so she's walking in, taking on a big role. So, I said, take your time, I want you to stay, but come back and work some shifts, work the boat patrol, help us out when you can, and she's a valuable asset, so I'm glad she's sticking around.
Thank you. I appreciate you. All right, well, with that, I think that's...
Congratulations.
Thanks for your service, Sergeant.
And good luck.
Yes.
Good luck.
Okay. We're moving on to action item D, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of resignation of Paul Guerin from the police department effective July 21st, 2025. So, do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Paul Guerin from the police department effective July 21st, 2025.
I'll second that and add our thanks for his service. Do we have all those in favor?
I just want to say for the record, too, I'm disappointed that we couldn't figure out a way, because he was already a trained officer. And I guess I just want to ask, I guess, our chief, because you said, "I did so after consulting with town council and was advised there would be no pay issue." Unfortunately, that has not been the case. So, I guess I want to express my disappointment that town council didn't give us perhaps the right advice, or I don't know how that worked.
That's exactly what happened, unfortunately, and I hate to throw them under the bus, but the fact of the matter is, I sent them a very detailed email saying what my concern was, and they responded back. He called me, actually, and said, "No, no issues."
Well, here's where we're going to stop right there, because we're not going to reveal what our council does, so on the record. Okay.
But did we pursue it, and it's, there's no way?
Sorry, Jean, I didn't mean to cut you off, but it's...
I mean, I invited it, so I apologize.
No, it's okay.
We tried. Okay.
We tried, it didn't work. We appreciate your service.
But this is, and in no way is this a blight on Mr. Guerin, and I want to be clear on that. We would have loved to have had him.
All right. Thanks, chief. Thanks, everyone. Okay.
There goes half the audience.
All right, moving on to consideration and possible action on election workers for the 2025-2026 election season.
Okay, we do have the list, and it is an appointment by the selectmen. Although Lynn knows the people.
I know, right. But, all right, Lynn, so what's up?
So, I just want to bring this before you. It's a requirement through the state that I have to do this every year to have you approve our election workers for the 25-26 season. Of course, we don't use them all at once, only on the bigger elections. This past local election, we only used six election workers, which was great. We had a chance to kind of do a few different scenarios with them and cross-train, which we're really trying to do with most of the election workers, so anybody can jump in at any different position at a time. So, we don't necessarily use them every election.
All right, questions?
I have a question for Lynn. Somebody asked me, how do they get on this list?
They just, a letter of interest.
Letter of interest? Okay.
And then, usually, like, what I have them do is volunteer first, like as a greeter, you know, see how it's working, because some of the, you know, some people don't realize we're up there at 5:30 in the morning till 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. It's a long day. And we've tried to do a half-day, but a lot of the workers want to be there throughout the day, and I do find that the consistency is nice, because at the end of the day, you know what's going on that happened, like at 9 o'clock in the morning or something like that, where you split shifts. You don't necessarily realize what's going on in the morning when you're closing up at night.
A huge thank you to these people for being willing to do it. It's not like they make a lot to do it, and it really, and it's so committed when you go in, they're so committed to the process.
No, it's, and honestly, thank you to you, Lynn, because we probably don't say it enough. All you do is really...
I would love to do it. I think it's great to be part of the whole...
Wonderful thing. No, it is.
I know, I'm one of the people. I like to vote.
Issues. You've got to work on some of that.
I'm with you on this. You get a little pin vote today, you know.
Yeah, no, it's...
Don't go to line three. That's going to be my second career.
I'm going to be the only somebody sitting at those polls. That's going to be it. I'll check out the polls.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion to approve the election workers for the 2025-2026 election as listed?
Okay, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn.
I just have one other question I'd like to bring up, and it's just something for maybe the board to consider, is Eight Brookfield Road. And talking with other departments, this, it's a slow season right now for us, because we've only had, you know, two, one election this year. So, we're doing some cleaning in-house at the town clerk's office, and we're kind of running out of room, and I'm trying to make space in my vault and also in the office. And I've talked with other departments, and they feel the same way, too. They're kind of bursting at the seams, and we're trying to condense and, you know, reorganize. But Eight Brookfield Road, I mean, I know it's just sitting there. Is that something to maybe consider for storage for the future or something? I mean, I know we've talked about it, you know, 20 years ago, putting wood down there.
It's been looked at and even to upgraded. It was like $600,000.
So, you're exactly right. It's close to a million now. It's actually since that time.
Because I know when we looked at it for recreation and the cable access going there, I think it was like at 450 at the time we were looking at.
We're still, I still get calls from people who want to buy it. I have people who are looking for some artistic maker and craft space that are willing to invest money in it. There's also issues right now, though, that half that parking lot is still the state. So, I also have, for us, that wouldn't be an issue, but for other use, it would be. So, it's a big issue. Big issue for sale value.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we should probably put that back on the table.
The whole storage discussion is...
Something has to happen. It's not getting better with time.
The whole storage discussion is huge. We've done a lot of data compiling of late, and we're trying to do more of that, vaulting, electronically vaulting, but...
And I've heard, you know, I guess there's mold in the area, in the building itself. But, you know, back when we looked at it 15, 20 years ago, you know, it needed new windows, it needed a new roof, whatnot, it's a cement building. I mean, if you went in there, remediate the mold or the issues there and then put in new, you know, windows, new roofing, whatever, I mean, it would be a great space for, like, recreation, to have a rainy day spot to go to, an extra meeting room, storage, whatever. I mean, I think the town could really utilize that, I'd love to have that building.
There's a lot of good ideas out there on utilization of it, but...
It's the cost.
A lot of stepping stones to get there.
But I just wanted to bring it before the board, if there's something, I told these departments, I said, I'll bring it before and let them take a look.
My first choice would be a recreation building, but again, the, you know, the cost...
Well, it's, yeah, all of it, it's, it's much more complicated than that, but it's a very fair point, Lynn, and we appreciate you bringing it around because it does need to be addressed.
Consideration for the future, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Through the chair, before, before you go, can I just say something? I just want to give a shout out to Lynn because over the weekend I had the chance to go look at the cow parade. And I know that was at Old Sturbridge Village, so anybody watching, just go, there's twenty-seven decorated cows, it's, they're pretty amazing. But I think it was your brain, your brainchild to do a Sturbridge. Ours is the best. And it's fabulous, it's in a great location, you know, right where the entrance is. And I, I just, you know, it was creative and, and I was happy that Sturbridge did something because I think the city of Worcester did...
Well, they heard we were apparently.
And I thought, oh boy, if we didn't do one when OSV is right in our own town.
Right.
So it was just so nice, I, I get to put the one, you know, my mother used to work at the Public House Bake Shop when it was a separate building. God rest her soul, Mary Eternal, and you had a picture of that before it burned down. So people, you know, watching it, it's, it's quite a cow.
And, and which was, and which was nice, like, you know, Robin's always talking about team. And it was nice to get everybody together and even just have a moment to put a picture on and talk with another department. And it really, it brought, I think, a lot of us together. And we had a really nice night when they, you know, showed us all the cows and we went as a group.
They brought us the artist and the artisans. What will happen to that cow?
I'm sorry?
Has been...
Slaughtered.
Nope.
Terrible.
It has actually, I believe, been purchased by a private benefactor. We're hoping that the, um, Tilda will stay in town.
Yes.
We don't know who purchased her, but if it stays in town, and that's something we're going to bring up.
Buzz I'm hearing, and I honestly do not know who it is.
What is the buzz?
But the buzz is that the, that the cow, and I don't want to speak for whoever it is because I don't know who it is. But the rumor is that the town will be available to the town, the cow will be available to the town for things like the 250th Parade and to be displayed in town locations. So I believe that... Do we know what it sold for?
So we're, I'm going to pull this back now because although I appreciate, yeah, here we are saying Lynn deserves to have her lullaby day in.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're moving on to consideration of possible action on issuance of a live entertainment license to Pine Lake RV at Twenty River Road. Okay.
That's you.
Hey. All right, just identify yourself for the record and say what's going on.
So I had an oversight of, I thought, right applications, I guess. So I, in front of my attention, I had to have a permit for live entertainment, so we went through and put one out. So I thought it was the common vic, but I guess she explained to me that it wasn't, so I mean, it is what it is.
Just in one of the licenses he needed.
Okay, um, any questions, thoughts, concerns?
It says that the hours of operation, eight to eight, you're going to have a band at eight in the morning?
Oh, that's, that's the business.
I'm just going to be out there boogying.
So we do have rapscallions in there, what they decided to do was different, no.
I'm getting so old at eight in the morning, might be the only time I can listen to a band. By eight at night, I'm done.
So, um, all right, that makes sense, anything else?
No, I have no problem with it.
Does anybody have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a live entertainment license to Pine Lake RV at Twenty River Road Sturbridge.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor? All right, anything coming in?
Thank you.
All right, consideration and possible action on issuance of a one-day liquor license for Altrois Brewing Company, August 22nd, 2025, for an event at 178 C Main Street. Pickleball U from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. I mean, I think these are pretty well-known players.
They have a lot of partying going on there.
They play pickleball supposedly, but it sounds like way too much fun to call it exercise.
Perhaps, so do we have a motion to...
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, moving on, consideration and possible action on the Select Board letter of support for the town of Oakham against installation of a proposed 180-megawatt lithium battery energy storage system decided at 358 Cold Book Road within the Ware River watershed and bill HD 4557. In act requiring local approval for battery storage. We discussed this at our previous meeting, I think some folks weren't there, so we figured we would just bring, bring it to the attention. But it seemed worthy to support both the bill and statements and letters, so that's sort of what it was. Because we were just concerned that they'd be basically at the, on the other side of Oakham, having large lithium battery storage facilities.
So just asking for support to draft the two letters.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so, okay, do, do we have a motion to draft those letters? I think we did draft them, didn't we?
Well, you have sample ones.
Sample ones, okay.
I don't have my second half of the agenda.
I haven't drafted the letter yet to the state reps.
No, neither do I.
I don't have the second act.
Yeah, I got a couple of printing issues, I know, it's, it's okay, I'm sure it's just a printer.
Well, the Oakham letter is standard one, they asked us just to put out a, a standard letter. And then the bill is just, I'll just draft a letter saying we support.
So I make a motion to support the statement by Oakham. And additionally, we make a motion to support issuance of a letter by the town administrator supporting bill HD 4557. Is that all what you need?
Yep.
Second is...
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Art, updated temporary dock policy.
Yeah, so as you know, we sent out letters to about 400 people saying that they, if they had a temporary dock, they needed a permit. We know that the logistics of that are particularly difficult if every one of them who has a temporary had actually applied for a permit this year. I'm not sure, we would have still been sitting at meetings day and night to get them done. However, it's not fair that some people do apply for the permit, some people don't apply for the permit. And the other thing is, we don't have like a tag that we hang on the temporary dock for enforcement, so we give the permit, but if the police go by, they don't know who has it or who doesn't. What I'm suggesting is, the only reason we did this is that the policy was in place that said they needed a permit. And once we became on notice, we sort of at least had to say some of those letters out. What I'm suggesting is, we keep all of the same parameters in place, but it's not a permitting process. It's simply a policy that if you have a temporary dock, it requires these things. If that temporary dock disrupts the land, conservation needs to come look at it. If we have, like anything else, if it's reported that there's a problem, if we become aware there's a problem, if the police notice some dock sticking way out, it gets reported to us, it becomes more of a harbor master enforcement issue. Instead of requiring the permitting process, because the logistics of permitting all those people is, it, it, it's just not viable. And so I think in taking a step back, what I suggest is we just simply have the policy. We send another letter out to all the lake people with the policy, say, here's a temporary dock policy. And if they want a variance from this, they could apply for a special variance. If for some reason they have a special situation where they need to go out significantly longer or wider, or they need to have two on their property, whatever else it might be that they want. Then they can come apply for almost like a special use or a special variance.
So where is the alter? Is the policy the same and you're just saying?
We're just going to remove, I, I thought I had it with tracking, but it may not have been, it was tracking. What I did was I pulled off anything that said permitting and left all the policy parameters the same.
I mean, I think it's six to a half dozen, to be honest, because I think following, I think it's...
Well, I, no, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, it's okay, because it's, the, 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 I, a permit requires them, the ball to be in their court versus it to be an inspection issue. So if they're supposed to be doing it, it, it ends up, posture is a little bit better for us, whereas we're, we're kind of taking the obligation on the other way. But by the same token, but someone has to go out and periodically pay attention to the length of these docks, else it's going to be a free-for-all.
Yep.
That's sort of, what were you going to say, Mary Lou?
No, I was just going to say, I would like to take another week or two to read through.
There's no rush at this point because those docks are already in, we're not allowed, and that's my whole point. We're basically have a policy that we're not even able to... I mean, I think it's fine to, to think about it, but I'll give my off-the-cuff opinion right now. I, I would tend to agree with our, with Robin, only because when you have a permitting process, then nobody's complying and we're not enforcing it. Except for a handful of people, it takes the teeth right out of the permitting process. Whereas if we say, look, we're not going to permit anymore, but if we catch you and, you know, you're violating it, you're going, you know, it's kind of, you know, like the speed, a speeding ticket. People speed by, but if you're the one caught, they can't come in anymore and say, well, this one doesn't have a permit either and this one doesn't. You know, we're focused on you because we got a complaint or we inspected and we saw that yours was out of line. And I'll give you an example, I got a complaint the other day, an anonymous complaint about just a water trampoline that somebody had. I took a ride-by, I'm not the harbor master, but I figured you guys wouldn't mind if I took a ride-by. And it's nothing that even falls under a policy, so it's a non, it's a non-complaint. But let's say it had been a legitimate one, then I would have sent a letter to that home and said, you have a problem, blah, 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 you either need to apply for that or, or not. My big thing is, we have some people who followed the rules when they got the letter and, you know, they went through the hoops to do it and then others don't, that doesn't seem fair either. And so that's why I'm thinking to select...
Yeah, it's a reasonable point, anyways, let's put it, let's put it on the shelf for now until the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I just...
It would require a follow-up letter to all of them.
Just a follow-up letter, say, here's the policy. If, if that's what the board adopts. And I do, I have been in touch with the lakespeople generally as we're going through this and I'd ask them for any input on it as well. And I think they're sort of comfortable self-policing too, and taking on a little bit of that role themselves. Because they don't want some of these outrageous docks either.
Yeah, except for the, for the police.
Well, it's our job, but yeah.
Well, if you give me a boat, I'll be happy.
We have a boat, you can go out in it. Go out and just cut, you have your dock, you can do it.
I had several people tell me... Oh, the reason you're, I had several people tell me and then I said, no, that's actually not accurate. When they got these letters, say to me, oh, that's just the beginning of you starting to file a fee. And you want all of us, you know, to come in for the permit and then next year it's going to be a fee for us to put. And I said, no, we're just trying to enforce our policy that's on the books and have everybody on the same page. And, you know, there's just a lot of suspicion of... Then I was told that we were going to start taxing the temporary docks.
For that reason, let's just stay focused here, guys. All right, so we're going to keep moving, uh, to consideration and possible action authorizing the town administrator sign a three-year service contract with Elevator Company for the annual amount of approximately $7,559.52 for town locations. Unless there's discussion, I will make a motion on the favor.
Yeah, it's certainly not cheap.
No, and that, we actually got, we actually got a second price on that and...
Six twenty-nine a month.
Crazy.
Actually, I thought it was, like, elevators can be far more expensive, I actually thought this was cheap relative to...
I'll go ride the elevator.
No, I know, but I just, I'm really...
There's such a monopoly on the market.
Yeah, I know, but it really, you can sneeze in a building and spend an incredible amount of dollars.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to have the town administrator sign the contract with Otis Service for the town elevators.
Okay, I'll second that, all those in favors? Great, all right, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Francis O'Connell to the Cultural Council with a term to expire in 9/16/2028.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? All right, then, um, so consideration and possible action on accepting a donation of Fotonis Scientific, what does it say? Ink, uh, from Fotonis Scientific Inc. of an Altair four XR multi-gas detector with a value of $2,500.
It's actually about $11.25, came in cheaper than expected. I was a little hesitant, only because it's a business in town to accept that size donation, but it is a piece of equipment that we would use if they had an incident.
Yeah.
So that made me a little more comfortable accepting it from a, a town business like that.
I think it's fair, I'm, I'm, anybody have any questions, concerns?
No, it's...
Very generous.
Vehicle-mounted charger, calibrated regulator.
And as I said, it's something we don't have, and if they had an incident, it would be of use to us for that.
Okay, um, do we have a motion? Favor?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Tonus of $2,500 for the Altair four XR multi-gas detector, vehicle charger and calibration accessories.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, moving on to old business, Mary Lou?
Nothing.
Uh, Chase?
Nothing.
Mary Dowling?
I just have a couple. I know we brought up having a retreat to set new goals for our T A, so...
The holdups on my end.
Oh, no, no, I'm not trying, but maybe in the fall? Well, that's to give her a valuation, but I'm talking about the retreat.
Yeah, but she can't set her goals with...
Right, before that, okay, I mean, I, not in the summer, but that was one thing. And then I know, I'm always redundant with this, but I gotta, I gotta say it. Route 20, the weeds are out of control on the median strip. And, you know, I had somebody at the Pan Mass, a few riders that used to live in Sturbridge say, wow, you know, you're Route 20. They, they actually had a comment about it themselves. So, I mean, any of you can look, it, it just looks like we're not keeping up our town. So I know it's, it's a state highway, but if the Mass DOT doesn't do it, our DPW, we, the town of Sturbridge has to do it. We can't let all those weeds grow haphazard. And I don't think Mass DOT is, they haven't been this bad in a, a long time. And the sidewalks, all the weeds are, and some of them have poison ivy are growing, but I'm also talking that middle strip. I mean, we just, and I know over the winter you had said, you know, when we had the ice problem, with the, with the snow, the snow and ice making it not walkable. That, you know, we said, well, maybe we need more workers, you know, more DPW. And the comment was, well, in the summer, they're looking for things to do, so I don't want to hire more. So now it's summertime and we, we got to do something about that. I mean, I welcome anybody to go look.
I drive by every single day. But I mean, you know, the state has done a terrible job in the whole state. You drive from here to Boston, you drive from here to New York.
Doesn't look too bad.
I have to respectfully disagree, Mary.
Probably.
No, I'm just saying it's money, there's doing rich.
No, but we, I, I don't think other towns depend on the Mass DOT to do it. I mean, I'll reach out to Worcester and find out, I mean, Route 9, median strip is beautiful. And if Mass DOT is doing that in Route 9, I'd be surprised. And my guess is that the city of Worcester has picked that up, I'm just saying, but...
Fair though, I think, Robin, can you just follow up with Heather about what are viable next steps so we do not have to keep having this conversation? Because it is, Mary's right, it shouldn't, it should be controlled, it's, it's not a big to-do and it, it really makes things look, you know, we spent all this money taking care of everything and then we're not doing the easiest thing possible. So with that, so just follow up, please. Okay, Mary, anything else?
No, and also maybe the, maybe Sturbridge, if, if we, Sturbridge Tourist Association, I know you're looking at them to adopt a highway. Maybe they can use some of their funds to maintain weeds, I don't know, because that's a tourist thing too.
Let's just keep moving forward, okay? Mary Blanchard, old business?
No.
I have no old business either. Um, new business, Mary Blanchard?
No.
Okay, Mary Dowling? Chase?
No, no.
I have none either, all right, correspondence, I don't think we had any. Oh, no, so, so approval of minutes, can we begin with the April 18th, 2023? Does anybody see any edits to this, noting Chase and Mary Blanchard, you were not there?
I read through it, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve as written?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 18th, 2023 as written.
I'll second that, all those in favor? Or no, yeah, we have two extensions. All right, Chase and, all right, moving on. Uh, again, this is Jamie, Mary Dowling and Mary Blanchard. These are the August 26th, 2024, uh, meeting minutes. Do we have any edits to these minutes? All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as written, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Noting two extensions. Okay, July 7th, 2025. Do we have any edits to these minutes? And again, Mary Blanchard and I were not there.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 7th, 2025.
Second.
Oh, no, I'm saying, three, three in favor, two extensions, me, Mary Blanchard. Moving on to the July 21st, 2025, uh, minutes, any edits? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes of July 21st, 2025 as written.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor? And Mary Lou's abstaining. Four and one extension. Citizen forum, Charlie, did you just come to talk? No.
I didn't even see it.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a, all right, all those in favor? Great, thanks, everyone.